City Council Meeting of Wednesday, March 20th, 2024. President Flores, Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop. Mr. Witherspoon is absent.
On yours?
Alrighty, I'm gonna have everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and our moment of silence afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll take a moment of silence before we get started. And we will continue, thank you.
Motion to accept the minutes from the March 6, 2024 City Council Meeting and bills for payment on March 22nd and 28th. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Troop, and Flores.
Alrighty, we have three presentations tonight. And we're going to start with Josh Bloom from Lakota Group, who will be joining us from Zoom, right? Or is Tina and Jean going first, Lori?
I don't see Mr. Bloom on there.
Okay.
Maybe we want to start with someone else?
Yeah, we can. Tina can go next, and she's next on the list. Hello, Tina?
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I wanted to give a brief presentation and just up-
Is that mic on?
The green light's on. Is that better? Wanted to give an update and brief presentation on some of the projects that we've been working on, that you've been our partners on. For the last several years, you've made investments in several city projects, and they were key initial investments that allowed us to get started. So you have in front of you a packet that highlights some of those projects, so I wanted to just quickly run through them. I know time's limited. So the first project we started on was the Berry Plastics Project at 15th and Cherry Streets. Or 15th and Myrtle, I'm sorry. It was a Bronfield project. It was blighted. Lot of fires up there, lot of problems with the city had spent a lot of resources tackling. We went in there, we cleaned it up, remediated it. It was a true collaboration with the city, Public Works, Water Authority, Administration, Council. And today, Berry Global has moved into a $9 million warehouse facility. It is your investment of a $1 million loan to us and ARP grant was leveraged with state grants and other private loans to allow that $9 million project to come to completion. As I said, they've moved in. We've secured 142 jobs and 15 new jobs, improved and ablighted five acres and a neighborhood. So we're very proud of that. It's a really good project, and you should be very proud too of that project. So thank you for your help on that. The other project that I think is a project that exemplifies the meaning of what the American Rescue Plan dollars were meant for is the Savakia Opportunity Park. No other project in this city probably more exemplifies what those dollars were meant for. In the urban core, disinvested neighborhood, you know, the poorest of the poor area, multicultural area. So your $1 million ARP grant is being leveraged for a nearly $5 million project on a former Bronfield site again, that will create both a community garden and a commercial garden, organic, commercial garden that will result in a social enterprise that will create jobs for the neighborhood, recycle dollars back into the neighborhood, into the region, and ultimately create 19 acres of development and a catalyst for the whole Buffalo Road East Erie neighborhood. So really proud of that project. The foundation has been laid. It's in its early stages. There's still some gap financing to take care of, but it's moving along nicely. And the community garden is actually fully funded. We just, we had got a CBD G grant from the city, and it was matched just a week ago by a federal appropriations from Senator Casey's office. So thank you. So that's done, that'll be built this summer as well. So excellent work, we're really proud of that. Thank you again for your help on that. Third project, the Quinte Site at 16th and French. That one's not quite as far along, but we did get the demolition done. We were able to remove some underground tanks that ended up being as large as railroad cars, they were that big. It still has quite a ways to go in terms of remediation, but we are in that process right now, doing some testing on the site and additional work, but it's in process. So we've made some progress. It at least is safer than it was before, and we will continue to plow forward on that. And then the project on West 12th Street, 12th and Cherry, the former EMI site. We've invested significant dollars into that project so far, both in terms of cleanup, demolition. Over $4 million has been invested to date, both city dollars, EPA dollars, state dollars, and we are now ready to begin renovations. Next week, you will see renovations start. It's a $20 million, $25 million renovation plan. Your investment has been leveraged with state and federal to get, secure state and federal grants of nearly $20 million. So all toll, your investment of loans and grants to the RDA of approximately $6 million, I think it is, $6.5 million to the RDA has leveraged a total of $46 million in other funds. So that's a pretty good return on investment, so I can't thank you enough. So, so far, we've completed one project, the Berry Global Expansion. We've got two projects in motion, Savakia and the Quinte Project. And the third project in motion, EMI Site is now in its renovation stage, pretty good. And then the fifth project, which is just beginning, is the Erie Coke Project. And I bring that up, not asking you for any money, but I just want you to know that our commitment to projects in the city continues. The Coke Project, as you know, will be a major undertaking, but, and it is something that we are committed to, working with the Port Authority on. Probably will take decades, and the only thing I'll be asking you for in the near future will be letters of support, so, but I-
Letters of support are easy, and I'm happy that the Coke Plant has come back to the city, and we have that with the Port Authority, so hopefully they're able to, you know, hopefully they're gonna be able to clean it up. We might not see it, but it'll be an asset.
Yeah, no, it's important that we have local control, and that's what-
I'm worried about- 12th and Green Garden?
12th and Green Garden.
Do you have a question, Ed?
Yeah.
Yes, I do. I'd like to know what's going on with the 12th and Green Garden project. Looks like a bomb scare over there with the eclipse coming in and things like that. It's a terrible eyesore, and I've asked questions for the last month and a half.
That was sold and is in private hands right now, Mr. Brzezinski.
You gave him the money, so you should have some private hand in it too. You can't, I'm not gonna get the name out, but you can't call the guy and have him at least put a sign there on the corner saying "Future Construction Site," just so that the people who are coming into our town and drove could have something to say about it. That's all I'm saying. I'd like to see more accountability and more transparency.
Well, we did not give them the money, the RDA, but I will make a call. I do know who owns it, and I will try to encourage him, I will try to encourage him to take some action.
Thank you, Tina.
All right, thank you. I just want to say thank you again for all your support as council, greatly appreciate it.
Well, we're happy to see the investment that's happening for the future of the city, so thank you. Alrighty, Lori has Josh Bloom. Okay, well, we'll allow Josh Bloom to go next, since he was on Zoom and he was first on the list of presenters.
Mr. Bloom, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for having me, and I'm sorry that I was a little confused about the timing, so I'm sorry for joining a little late. I am going to, I believe you all received the Historic Preservation Plan that we prepared, and I know it was a very weighty document, and so I thought I would take you through a few very quick highlights from the plan, and I believe your adoption of it has been rescheduled for a future, a future meeting. So this plan has been over a year in the making, and we, we came to Erie a number of times, saw every neighborhood, and virtually all of its historic resources. And this preservation plan really sets out a vision for the city that embraces preservation as an economic development tool and as really setting a compelling vision of the future of the city, which is to think about how the past, the preservation of the past is part of Erie's future. We considered all, we looked at the full gamut of types of resources, from buildings to, from archaeological resources to religious buildings to homes to industrial heritage. And, and there's a whole timeline of Erie's history in the report, which you can look at. We looked at all six of the National Register Districts and the 24 National Register listed buildings and structures in the city. And, you know, preservation has been slow to coming around to embracing the importance of intangible, intangible cultural history, and so the plan also looks at that. The immigrant history of Erie and all of the many cultures that are manifest, not just in the people who live there, but in its historic resources and its festivals, and in many other ways. Plan talks a little bit about demographics. You all are aware that one of the principal challenges for Erie has been population decline, and that creates a demand problem for Erie's historic housing. And, you know, I think the good news is for many cities, for many mid-sized and smaller cities, that this movement toward remote work and people being able to live in places that are more affordable and have a higher quality of life works in Erie's favor. I'm an example of a remote worker, working for the Lakota Group, which is based in Chicago. We also looked at housing occupancy and owner occupancy and how that can be, how that can be strengthened, and some tools, some preservation tools for working on that. I'm looking at, again, I'm sorry that you're not able to see the slides, but I'm sort of using this for myself. We looked at demographics and race and ethnicity across Erie's historic districts, and it's interesting, and I think a positive finding, to say that the population, the racial and ethnic population of Erie's historic districts actually pretty closely mirrors the population of the city overall, which I think is a positive reflection of preservation. The Historic Review Commission, of course, was a central part of the plan and a part of its recommendations, and I'll just get as, I sort of bring this toward a close. I'll just list a couple of things that are kind of the overarching themes of the plan. One, first, is to identify Erie's more or all of Erie's historic and cultural heritage, and part of that is through survey work, which is part of the recommendations. Two is telling Erie's diverse stories. Three is protecting and conserving places through clear and understandable policies and procedures for protecting those resources. Fourth is investing in historic assets and stimulating investment in Erie's historic residential and commercial assets. Fifth is engaging the community, making sure that the community understands the value of preservation and how it can be used as a tool to strengthen Erie's economy. And sixth is managing the program, so fostering an effective preservation program that can really carry this forward. We set out a couple of initial goals for the first year, well, we set out goals for five years, but in the first year, which is the only one that I will talk about here with you, is the importance of strengthening the operations of the Historic Review Commission through hiring a historic preservation planner, which I'm happy to celebrate with you, has been done, and I've been in touch with Heather, and that's, and that's great. Training of that staff, and continuing the survey and documentation with the Pennsylvania Chippewa and other partners. And again, emphasizing community engagement so that the full city of Erie is really brought into this process and really kind of understands and adopts a preservation ethos for the city and its, and its many benefits. And with that, I am, I would welcome your questions, and again, I'm sorry that the AV didn't work, the, I can send the slides to you to be distributed, if that's helpful.
Yeah, can you please just have an email sent over to the ladies in the clerk's office, whether it's Lori or Erin, that way council can see the slides that we didn't get to see? I know we had the plan sent to us previously, so we all have a digital copy of it, and if we need a hard copy, we just have to ask for it, because I think we have two books down here, but we-
We can get more.
We can get more if we need them for council, so just let Lori know, everyone on council, if you need a plan to review and hard copy. Thank you.
Okay, and I will say the slides, and I will send them over, are really a direct excerpt from the, from the PDF that you have of the preservation plan.
Thank you. Alrighty, I think-
My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
You are very welcome. Thank you for joining us all. You're from Philly, have a good rest of your day.
Okay, you as well, take care.
Alrighty, and the last one for presentation is going to be with Mr. John Oliver from Visit Erie to speak on the solar eclipse, which will be happening on April 8th. So I wanted the city of Erie to have a little bit of an education on what to expect and what to, you know, prepare for, I guess.
Thank you, good evening. My name is John Oliver, I'm the president and CEO of Visit Erie, we're Erie County's destination marketing organization. We're less than a month away from Erie's total solar eclipse on Monday, April 8th. Erie is the only major Pennsylvania city lucky enough to be in the path of totality. Erie will not be in another path of totality until 2144, so this is truly a once-in-a-lifetime event for all of us who are here. This means the eclipse chasers from all over are expected to visit destinations in the path of totality, that includes Erie. As anticipation and excitement build, the region braces for an influx of visitors eager to witness this rare celestial event. An estimated 56,000 to 200,000 visitors are anticipated to travel to Pennsylvania, with the majority heading north to Erie. If Erie sees even the low number of projected visitors, we could become the third-largest city in the Commonwealth for that day, and possibly doubling in population, and making it Erie County's largest tourism-related event in history. The eclipse presents the perfect opportunity for the Erie community to come together, put its best foot forward to welcome eclipse visitors and make this event a shining success. In an effort to bring the community together in a fun and an engaging way, Visit Erie created the Shine Campaign. What I'm going to describe to you, we have on cards, I've put these out at the front on your information desk for people to get. It's five simple things residents can do to ensure the community is prepared and at its best. S, schedule your appointments for another day. Do you have standing appointments? Do you have activities that day? Look at your calendar now and consider rescheduling or even going virtual, if possible, with your planned commitments. Normal routines will be disrupted by heavy traffic. If you must go out, allow for extra time. H, have a plan. Get gas and groceries in advance. Those potential 200,000 visitors are going to need to fill up before heading home, especially considering projected traffic delays. Think about your weekly routines and try to complete those tasks like getting gas, going to the grocery store, or picking up prescriptions ahead of time to avoid crowds. I, inform yourself and others, know what's going on, whether it's an eclipse event or one of Erie's many attractions or restaurants. Educate yourself on everything visitors can see, do, and experience. Let's be proud Erie advocates and show our visitors, many of them first timers, what a great time, and encourage another visit. Tell your family, friends, neighbors, and visitors what makes Erie so special. N, navigate traffic. Stay off or don't stay off major roadways. Lead the interstates to our visitors and consider witnessing the total solar eclipse from your own backyard. The sun will be high enough in the sky and above the tree line that virtually anywhere in the county would be a good viewing spot. To put traffic delays in perspective, imagine being stuck in Peach Street traffic all day long. We have heard that in previous events down in Nashville, Tennessee in 2017, there was congestion in some areas for 12 hours. They said in one place it took three hours to go 30 miles. So it is something that we're encouraging people, if you don't have to, don't go out. If you do, take the back roads. We as residents know ways to get around without having to travel on some of the major roads, leave those, make those available for our visitors. E, enjoy the moment. Erie's lucky to be part of this. This truly, as I mentioned, is a once-in-a-lifetime moment that we all want to enjoy. Let's create an atmosphere of kindness, positivity among neighbors and visitors alike. Smile, extend acts of thoughtfulness, keep our region clean, and offer assistance wherever possible. At the end of the day, our goal is to work together as a community to ensure a safe and memorable eclipse experience for everyone, residents and visitors. For all things Erie Eclipse related, including a list of eclipse events and public viewing locations, residents are encouraged to go to a website that we created, erececlipse2024.com. We're updating that on a daily basis for various events that we're made aware of that are taking place throughout the county, along with any other updated information that may be necessary. We'll also use that site during the day of the eclipse to update people on road conditions, traffic, if roads are being closed, et cetera. We've been working for the last year and a half, we've coordinated a committee that has included representatives from the city, the county, we have state police, we have municipal EMS, you know, anyone, hotels, exact, to come together on a regular basis so that we can have a coordinated event and one that people are talking to each other. We do know that the 9/11 center will be the central point to coordinate and get word out regarding any concerns, if there's traffic or other things, delays that we can make people aware of. But thank you very much.
Thank you for all that information in such a short time period, I appreciate that. I look forward to checking out the erececlipse2024.com website, just so I'm aware of what to expect of the day as well, and I'm happy that you put in that us Erie residents know the back roads and the shortcuts around our city to try to prioritize that route versus getting stuck, because sometimes we're always in a hurry, and I don't want to have additional tragedy due to road conditions.
We can't encourage residents enough to consider, just don't go out that day. I mean, get things done in advance. I think residents will enjoy the eclipse better by not being stuck in traffic, because the bayfront, even the peninsula, we're not encouraging and have been asked not to encourage visitors from out of town to go out onto the peninsula to view this. The concern is that we don't want them to have to spend an hour or two to get off the peninsula before they then have to try to travel home.
Well, I appreciate you coming. I want to say thank you to everyone who presented tonight to us, we appreciate you all coming to update us, and I think we will be moving on to repository sales. Do we have any repository sales in the audience? Okay, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening. Okay, I'll get you one. If you could answer these questions, I'm gonna need a copy of your license.
Okay. Alrighty, is the-
What's your name?
Ryan Peaster.
Do you live in the city of Erie?
I do.
Nice, okay.
This is 935 West 17th Street.
What was that address one more time?
935 West 17th.
Thank you. Is there a prop, is the property vacant, or does it have a structure on it?
It's completely empty right now.
Okay. What are your plans slash intentions for the property?
Um, at the moment, the mental state is my eldest is gonna be 18 soon, so we're gonna put a mobile home on it for her right now, to teach her some responsibility.
Okay, so you want to build on it in the future?
Yes.
Okay, nice. Is it close to your property, or?
It is four houses down.
Oh, nice, so you're close to the neighborhood, keeping your eye on your daughter?
Yes.
I understand that. Any other questions from any members of council?
Just my question would be, what would the zoning around, if it was a mobile home?
Yeah, that's not out.
Yeah, that's not allowed.
Okay. Just, I guess just for you, because I would hate to see like you going with the intention of putting a mobile home and then going to do that and then not being permitted. So within the current zoning, it wouldn't be permitted?
Correct, that's not permitted in current zoning.
Okay, and that's fine. We were not, we have no intention of moving anytime soon. We just actually got to Erie, so.
No.
It's not a big deal.
I just don't want you to make a plan and then start.
That's fine, thank you.
I still love to see you develop.
Would the updates in order?
No, but it would, it would make it easier for her to develop.
To build something there?
But still wouldn't cover.
Mobile homes, okay. So we can't put a mobile home, but you will be able to hopefully build on it a structure for her?
Okay.
Based off of what the code and everything is permitted. Anyone else have a question? Catherine, you good? Everyone good?
Yeah.
Alrighty, well, I have no other issues, just to make sure that you are aware of what you can and can't do with the property. The city code enforcement and, you know, zoning will give you all that information and permits. Thank you. Do we have any other repository sales? She lives four houses down?
True.
And he lives a couple tiny, small houses or whatever. Do we have any other repository sales? Going for the good of the order one last time, do we have any repository sales? I hear none. We will be moving on to citizens to be heard. If you will line up on the, your right side of the room, cameras are correct on being on the left side, and we will go one at a time. Each resident gets five minutes to be heard. Please state your name and municipality in which you live, and we will listen to our residents. Thank you.
My name is Freda Taffer. I live in the city of Erie, and I want to be clear that unless there's some special occasion when I'm in a different role, I speak as an individual when I stand here. So I listened to the CBDG, if I'm getting that right, study session today. Only 25,000 was requested for parks. I was kind of like, what? I think, I have said this before, I don't think the Parks Department is in the right place in the city, being under Public Works. I think they're kind of an orphan there. I think the city should, I don't know, should it be its own department? Should it be under planning? But it's, there's some really wonderful people in Public Works and some people I liked less who are gone now. But where's the Parks Plan? We kept hearing about a Parks Plan, and where is the sidewalks at Baldwin Park that were, should be triggered by all the money spent in the park? We've got lousy broken benches there in Baldwin Park. We spent all this money on pickleball, but we've got lousy broken benches. You know, the Parks Department could have put in some money for, towards the restroom. I don't know if it's eligible or not, but I'm just kind of horrified that they only, and there are sidewalks. I know I talked to Leanne Palmerner. Many of the parks have no sidewalks around them. That is such low-hanging fruit for the city, because they own, they own the right of way. They own all the property around the park. You know, Gray Bennett Park doesn't have, there's some of the parks on the east side, a bunch of them. Baldwin Park did use some sidewalk. So I would love to see a different place for the parks. So speaking of parks, we go to parking, and there has to be some way for people who don't have a smartphone to park in the city downtown. I mean, it's ridiculous. I know that many people have smartphones, but not everybody. I understand Chuck Schumer still has a flip phone, my sixth grade classmate. So I have been a contributor to many code enforcement complaints, some of the same ones repeatedly. Still, our dear friends from Waste Management have not cleaned up the sidewalks on Raspberry. And I understand there's an issue with things not getting done because the magistrate courts are not, I don't know what they're not doing and why it's not happening. How about a study session to find out where the roadblock is to get these code enforcement things through the citation process? You know, maybe with, with the, I don't know, but I'm just throwing it out there, because I don't know how many times I've turned in the same violations over and over and over again, and nothing happens. And I'm sure I'm not the only one. I'm sure that the Redevelopment Authority has done a lot of good things, but the way they managed the Quinte property was really sloppy. Until I said something to them, there was an open tank lying there on the ground where there's kids from across the street in the apartments. You can't tell me that tank wasn't contaminated. And I don't know what kind of soil is still left there on site that is open for the kids who live across the street to hang out in. So I'm concerned about that. One of the things I heard on the CBDG was also about, and I'm not speaking for anybody, but I spoke to more than one entity that has a summer employment program, and I heard that there was an issue over, what are the kids learning? The kids are learning how to hold the job, for gosh sakes. Isn't that a deliverable by itself? I was concerned when I heard that. Again, I think it's really important for us to have bathrooms, at least in Perry Square and other places. And where's the ARP money for that? Where's the CBDG money for that? Thank you.
Thank you, Freda.
Matt Texter, City of Erie. I was hungry and you gave me food. I was thirsty and you gave me drink. Years ago, I gave up on a faith that I found to be full of hypocrisy and contradictions. But still verses like this have stuck with me as I have turned towards a broader adoption of secular humanism, human rights, and reason. This short verse, "To those that believe in its absolute authority and divine mandate", has some biological implications. The title of Tara Ogami's children's book says it best, "Everybody poops." God made us this way, some would say. And the assumed yet unwritten words of Jesus could include, "I had to use the restroom and you provided one." Just like our forefathers, I'd never want to use any specific religious text as the word-for-word law of the land, but this passage does fit into the discussion around providing accessible, safe, public restrooms in the downtown area. It turns out, one of Erie's largest untaxed downtown property owners, a well-funded Catholic institution, Gannon University, is highly motivated to make quick public-private partnerships that will benefit the community that they are part of. I don't think there's a better time than now for the city to bring Gannon to the table on the issue. Perhaps they already have clean, accessible, and safe restroom facilities just steps away from Perry Square that could be opened up for public use. In fact, I think that every tax-deferred and untaxed entity downtown and throughout the city should be brought to the table to meet this need, as well as any other important needs of our communities. If it turns out that they don't want to play a leading role in addressing these, the issues that we face, then I think it's time to change their privileged status. We should start seriously talking about instituting pilot tax programs and mandatory community benefits agreements with these tax-exempt and tax-deferred entities to cover the cost of what we actually need. I get it. Having Gannon, having a Gannon logo on the side of a downtown restroom won't look as sexy on a brochure as a, as a broader research lab in our beautiful bayfront Blasco Library, but in the end, the very end, everybody poops. Someone very, and according to at least one book, someone very special has already asked, where's the restroom?
Thank you.
My name is Mike Campbell. This is my first time doing this. And.
Mike, do you live in the city?
Yeah, I live in the city.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and continue.
Kind of nervous. I got, I got a power chair over there. That's all this, on my sidewalk, a parked bench is blocking a sidewalk. I called the city about it. They told me they're going to have somebody to remove it last week, or a couple weeks ago. It's still there. I had to go around East 13, just go downtown because of the parked bench. I saw a lot of stuff on the sidewalks, these dicks. And a couple times, there's a, on the East 12th Street, there's a little lump on the sidewalks. Sidewalks, these dicks, full of wheelchairs and pirate chairs and walkers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for coming and speaking.
Ruth, excuse me, Ruth Swaney, City of Erie. I spoke to you two weeks ago. I'm back to speak to you again on that one issue, the issue of the Erie County Library, the Blasco Library. That is the only public library in the city of Erie. I know some of you said after I spoke, well, you don't see anybody from county council coming here to speak to us. Why should we go to the county council meeting and speak? I said, you can at least speak on your own behalf. But I really expect all of you to speak on behalf of all the citizens of the city of Erie. It is our library. It should not be being rented to a private, nonprofit, non-taxpaying institution. I don't have to name them. You know full well who I am talking about. But I want to talk to you. You could sponsor a resolution, and all agree on it, to support the Palestinians in the state of Gaza. Can you not sponsor a resolution supporting all the citizens of the city of Erie and our public library? A resolution asking to see it remain public. Public library, not public, rented apart to somebody else. Please do this. The other issue I'm here about is the funds. And I'm understanding that funding for the SSJNN Children's Program is being cut, funds for Erie Youth Leadership Program is being cut, funds for other programs that benefit us, our community, are being cut. So that that money can go to some out-of-town developer to put in high-end apartments in the Renaissance Center. Have you lost your moral compass? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Julian Hunter, citizen of Erie. Just a slightly, some would say a small concern that probably has been brought before you many, many times in the past. And I just want to shine a little light on it again this evening. I would like us to take a look at the condition of our city streets. And I do mean the actual streets. I work Monday through Friday. And day in and day out, I travel throughout the city of Erie. And I run into potholes and potholes and potholes that are created because one of the utility companies have had to dig up, and they have poorly restructured that part of the street where they were doing maintenance. And after being pulled over by police officials a couple times because of my swerving, it was due to trying to avoid potholes. I know it is a privilege to be able to, to be able to drive. I know it's a privilege, first of all, for me to even have a vehicle. It's a privilege for me to drive on the city streets. However, I do not, or other citizens, don't intend on spending excess amounts of money as far as maintenance to my vehicles/vehicles because of the conditions of the roads. And I understand that this is something that will not necessarily, or cannot necessarily, happen overnight. And I also understand that we can only fix streets during certain months of the year due to where we live. But just hearing the testimony of the gentleman sitting to my right as far as the sidewalks are concerned, those are a concern as well, since he mentioned it. However, I would just like us to take retrospect, take a survey. If my memory concerns, excuse me, if my memory serves me correctly, there's probably about 360-ish miles worth of city street within the city of Erie. And over three-fourths of that is in deplorable condition. And I don't know exactly how often we attack that versus what the state is responsible for, for state routes. But I would like us to look at that, just to see what we can do and how we can start to change that, just for the citizens of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
The very Reverend Melinda Hall, City of Erie. So there are six words that the mayor mentioned on the website that are the mission of the city of Erie. Build opportunity, restore hope, transform Erie. A wonderful six words. However, I rise to speak about the recent discussion on the CBDG grants, and I wonder whether they accord with said mission or not. Because building opportunity seems to involve a lot of our nonprofits who do a lot of good work in this city. And without the assistance they offer to some of our citizens who have the deepest need, those citizens will not get ahead. Then there is no opportunity for them. To allocate funds away from programs that aid the poorest among us is poor form. It doesn't build opportunity, it destroys opportunity. Restoring hope, not granting funds to help rehab for women or the youth who live in the area that the Sisters of St. Joseph operate within, to not fund the youth institute, that doesn't speak of hope. That's disinvestment. It's disinvestment in all of our futures, because it's a disinvestment in the youngest people among us. The future of Erieites lies in investing in these communities. The future of Erieites lies in investing in these communities. And the folks who live in these communities, served by these institutions, will never own any sort of condominium or apartment or whatever in the Renaissance Building. So that doesn't restore hope, it engenders hopelessness. And if you want to transform Erie, transformation, of course, is to make a drastic change in the appearance, the form, or character of something. And the question always is, in what direction are you making the transformation? A change in character would be to invest in the poorest parts of the city. A transformation in character would not be to continue on some of the cronyist tendencies that we are aware of, but to stop investing, not to stop investing in the people who need the funds the most. A change in form would be listening to our nonprofits who do so much of the work on the ground, listen to the people who need these funds. The question isn't whether Erie is being transformed, it is slowly, by a lot of these agencies who do the work, by a lot of good outside investment that's happening, by a lot of people like Gannon or Erie Insurance. That, this stuff is all wonderful, but this is a question about these funds that should be allocated in a particular way for a particular purpose, to help the people in our city who need it the most. So don't undermine them. So I would beg of you to consider the current suggested allocation of those block ground fans, funds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Berna Eret, also City of Erie. And I want to add to the comments from the very Reverend Hall. So we as a community want Erie to thrive. The ability of any part of the community to thrive depends on the whole. We do not live in isolation from each other. That means the more I can do to provide the tools for others to thrive, the stronger the community as a whole will be. Quality food, clean air and water, safe and affordable housing, access to good education and jobs with livable wages are all essentials for any individual to thrive. One cannot contribute to the good of the whole if one is worried every day where you will sleep or what you will eat. Quality affordable housing in areas that provide easy access to jobs without needing transportation supports the health of the whole community. Using HUD funds to build luxury apartments that would displace essential social services while also not using those funds to develop more quality affordable housing may seem like a good economic choice to some. But the cost is even more people in need of social services that are now harder to access. Those services are necessary just to get to the point of stability in order for people to be able to contribute to the good of the whole. Displacing access to those services or eliminating them entirely diminishes the health of the whole community. In the long run, we have to ask what benefits the community more. And in a city like Erie, the services we provide for those who struggle can help them to stand on solid ground. The more we can do that for every member of the community, the stronger we will be. I also must make an appeal to compassion. An ethic of compassion forces me to ask myself what kind of world I want to live in. Do I want one where I am successful and I have no responsibility for the well-being of others? That is not a thriving society. If I am functioning from an ethic of compassion, I must also recognize that not everyone has the same opportunities that I do. This whole notion of anyone can be successful if they work hard enough does not take into account the structural inequities of our society, where wealthy neighborhoods have more funding for schools that have additional programs for their students than poor neighborhoods. The access to good nutrition in this town requires transportation and enough money to buy it. It's cheaper to eat poorly than it is to choose a healthy diet. Any action by the city that privileges the wealthy and further marginalizes the poor is an affront to compassion and increases the structural inequities the city already faces. To fund office space and luxury apartments, which have not been all that successful in the downtown area, rather than using those funds for social services to help people find affordable, safe, reliable housing and social services that aid that process undermines the goals of housing and urban development, which is the support of communities where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Susanna Faulkner, City of Erie, speaking as an independent citizen. After watching last night's study session about the use of CDBG and home funds, I was quite frankly concerned. For folks who don't know, these federal HUD funds, Housing and Urban Development, are the single largest investment that the city of Erie receives for affordable housing. We receive anywhere from four to five million dollars every year that then is broken down into a bunch of different grants to support things like home rehab, various nonprofits, as well as the administration of our city's DCD office and department. So in our city's five-year plan, which we are currently in our fourth of five years, there are four intended outcomes that the city has declared. Provide decent affordable housing, provide a suitable living environment, increase homeownership, and end chronic homelessness. So as I'm watching the study session last night and hear that 15% of total allocations is being recommended for a private developer from California, Oz Operator LLC, for renovations to Renaissance Building, I was extremely concerned. It would be great to revitalize another area, an anchor building of downtown. That's fantastic. However, these funds are the largest source of affordable housing funds that we get as a city. So why is a private LLC that has already secured 45 million dollars in private equity and bank loans needs $600,000 from our city's CDBG funds? It just simply doesn't make sense to me as a grant administrator. Also, the total project cost is 50 million dollars. So I really don't know why we need to throw them a bone as a city because they clearly are very keen developers who have relationships with investors. Why do we need to give them $600,000 to complete luxury apartments and condos and offices as well as hospitality when these funds, like the city has said, are meant to go to decent and affordable housing, suitable living environment, increasing homeownership, and ending chronic homelessness? Within that 15%, that is the largest chunk of money that any single entity is getting from the city. It's embarrassing. It's truly embarrassing. Thank goodness this isn't the final plan. We live in a city where 12% of our housing stock is poor or unsound. Last year, there was a 25% increase in first-time homelessness, the largest we've ever seen since we've been recording. So why not offer Oz Operator LLC, for example, one of the many revolving loan funds that have been created from the American Rescue Plan? Or possibly a loan from the DECD Loan Fund, which is in ordinance number one under ordinances for final passage tonight? That seems like a great place to give them $600,000. That $600,000 could be redistributed to fund two to three public restrooms in the city of Erie. It could go to finally secure that supportive housing facility for our chronically homeless neighbors that we've heard so much about from infinite Erie and the city and the county. So why, why would we possibly give the largest chunk of money, 15%, from our federal dollars, which is our largest share that could go to affordable housing and to actually doing something to help our homeless neighbors, to a private, out-of-town LLC for luxury apartments and offices? Please reconsider it. This is, this would be a stain on our city. It is embarrassing at best to give 15% when they've already secured 45 million and so many of us, our nonprofits, are hanging by a thread to meet the current need in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gretchen Fairley, City of Erie. Along with all the others, I'm here tonight to express support for the local agencies that may need to reduce their services for Erie residents if city council votes to reallocate more than half a million dollars to go to an out-of-state developer for a downtown real estate project. I work for the Erie Field Office of the U.S. Committee for Refugees and Immigrants. Some of you still know us by our previous name, the International Institute of Erie. While this agency is not on the chopping block tonight, our neighbor across the street is, the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network. And funding cuts to them will have a ripple effect that's bigger than just their agency because of the ways that we all work together. The number one collaboration between our agencies right now is the SSJ's bike program. The Sisters provide free bicycles to neighbors, many of whom are newly arrived refugees. Most refugees land here with just one suitcase in hand, but they have big dreams for their future in Erie despite all the hurdles that they face in starting their lives all over again. And a bicycle may be the only way that they will be able to start their first job or to get to school or to get to childcare. So the SSJ's program with very simple, low-tech, humble bicycles is actually an enormous economic engine for Erie, both in terms of personal empowerment and also in terms of the dozens and dozens of local businesses who need workers and employ newcomers. Downtown development is important too, but there are plenty of other players and private investors in the real estate world who can source their own capital from the for-profit sector. Please retain the integrity and the purpose of these public funds to serve Erie residents in need. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard tonight? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard tonight? And for the good of the order, do we have any citizens who would like to be heard tonight? I hear none. Lori, we may move on.
Ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16421, official ordinance 9/2024. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,500,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof from the general fund balance and will be transferred to the DECD Loan Fund. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Trup. The council file ordinance bill number 16421 and now known as official file ordinance 9/2024 be finally passed by city council. Councilmembers Brazinski...
Before I speak, I just want to make a comment, if I can. This is about transparency and accountability. I love being called a partner. But a partner is somebody who was in the process, not told how good we did after they did it. So I am voting no on this. Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? Alrighty, Lori, go ahead.
Councilmember Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Trup, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 9/2024 by yeas five, nays one. Council file number 16422, official ordinance 10/2024. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,250,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue to be received from the City of Erie General Fund and utilized in the City of Erie Business Development Fund. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Trup. The council file ordinance bill number 16422 and now known as official file ordinance 10/2024 be finally passed by city council. Members Brazinski...
Discussion?
Go ahead.
Brazinski, this is another one similar to the last one. I was curious if there's anything else we need to discuss or is this just a matter of process?
You're still muted.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure if he has a comment or not.
All right, that's fine.
Councilmember Brazinski. Nelson...
Hold on. Do you have a comment, Ed?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I did. I just voted no again for the same reason.
Okay.
Not that I want to kill the program. I would like to see much more transparency and accountability, that's all.
Okay.
And I think a lot of you folks already know these things I'm talking about. So I do vote no for the cause of people, I guess, as well as me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Trup, Flores. Council filed bill number 10/2024 passes finally by yeas five, nays one.
Alrighty, oh no, go ahead. I'm skipping your part, Lori.
I know, I'm going slow. Council file number 16423, official ordinance 11/2024. An ordinance amending Article 952 honorary renaming of streets, secondary street signs to simplify the process of renaming streets in the city of Erie. Sponsored by Councilmember Trup, seconded by Councilmember Titus. The council file ordinance bill number 16423 and now known as official file ordinance 11/2024 be finally passed by city council. Members Brazinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Trup, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 11/2024 by yeas six, nays zero. Council file number 16424, official ordinance 12/2024. An ordinance amending the City of Erie zoning ordinance to designate the Waybuild Weber House, 317 Frontier Drive, Erie P.A., as historic structures pursuant to Article 7 of the City of Erie zoning ordinance and to amend the zoning maps to reflect such designation. Sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Titus. The council file ordinance 16424, now known as official file ordinance 12/2024 be finally passed by city council. Members Brazinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Trup, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 12/2024 by yeas six, nays zero. Council file number 16425, official ordinance 13/2024. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,250,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue to be received from the City of Erie General Fund and utilized in the City of Erie Urban Core Economic Recovery Fund. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Trup. The council file ordinance bill number 16425 and now known as official file ordinance 13/2024 be finally passed by city council. Members Brazinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Trup, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 13/2024 by yeas six, nays zero. Council file number 16426, official ordinance 14/2024. An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of the city of Erie. Sponsored by Councilmember Flores, seconded by Councilmember Schaff. The council file ordinance bill number 16426 and now known as official file ordinance 14/2024 be finally passed by city council. Members Brazinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Trup, Flores. City Council pass official file ordinance 14/2024 finally by yeas six, nays zero. City Council passes official file ordinance 14/2024 finally by yeas six nays zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16427, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $150,000 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the expenditure thereof for the construction of downtown Erie P A Stormwater Green Infrastructure Project, U.S. EPA Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Grant Number E02812. Sponsored by Mr. Trup, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the council file ordinance number 16427 having been read is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brazinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Trup, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16427 by yeas six nays zero on first Council File Number 16428, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $169,700 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the expenditure thereof for the purchase of five code enforcement vehicles and related equipment through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, CEAP, Grant Numbers C00088291 and 88292. Sponsored by Councilmembers Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Schaff, the council file ordinance number 16428 having been read is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brazinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Trup, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16428 by yeas six nays zero on first Council File Number 16429, An Ordinance Amending Article 131 Bureau of Fire to add sections that create a fire prevention division and that create an office of chief fire marshal and fire marshal to improve the safety of buildings through inspections, to prevent fires or fire hazards through inspections, and to investigate the origins and circumstances of fires. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Brazinski, the council file ordinance number 16429 having been read is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brazinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Trup, Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16429 by yeas six nays zero on first Madam President, this takes us to new business.
Can I have a motion in a second to move the balance?
Ed, do you want to unmute? I'll make that motion. A second.
Alrighty, thank you Tyler for your second.
No separations?
No separations tonight, guys and ladies and everyone?
Moving the balance of the agenda, members Brazinski, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Trup, and Flores. Resolution passes yeas six nays zero. Madam President, this takes us to committee reports.
Alrighty, we will start with Tyler and work our way down.
Okay.
I mean, if Ed would like to go first since he's on Zoom and it's a little bit chaotic, then he can go first. I just wasn't sure how his tech is right now.
You would have to unmute. Do you have a committee report? He's unmuted.
Just a reminder of all the things that, actually Mr. Oliver took my report because he said all the things that I heard at meetings at Port Authority and things like that about the deluge of people that we're going to have in our fair city when that eclipse comes. I guess I'm just saying that it's great because the Port Authority, the Civic Center, they're working together to make our city better and it's going to be interesting, that's for sure. And the Sea Wolves, of course, don't forget them. I didn't get that call in, Madam President, but I will talk to Mr. Coleman about coming and seeing us before the opening game.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, other than that, sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but I was there in spirit.
We appreciate you getting on Zoom and putting in the effort.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Tyler, you may go ahead and start.
Okay, thank you. I met with the Parking Authority on their board meeting on March 12th. They completed, they had their audit done and they were found to be in compliance. The elevators continue to be an issue for them and they're aware of that. However, the main issue is that the parts are in back order, so even though they would like to get them fixed, they simply cannot because they haven't been able to get the parts in. And I had mentioned this back in caucus and I will just kind of reiterate again, there still seems to be some confusion on what next steps need to happen for the signs to be put back up on State Street so individuals know how to park or pay the parking. And I absolutely hear the citizens who are bringing up concerns around, there needs to be options for those who don't have a smartphone, who can't pay via smartphone. And so I just want you to know, I hear that and I am bringing those concerns to the meetings. On, the EMTA meeting will be on Monday, so I'll report back out on that at our next city council meeting. On, tonight while we're meeting right now, they probably concluded, was the Human Relations Commission meeting. They're currently in the process of restructuring and the leadership positions are being moved around, so I will follow back up again with that one once those have been voted in. And then on March 12th, I met with several members from Public Works at the Erie Zoo at the golf course there and we walked the perimeter along the fence line and I just wanted to give a shout out to the Public Works team. This is going to be a multi-year plan to remove the trees that are along that fence that are creating a huge safety issue, but everyone came together to make a plan that's not only going to help the zoo retain their accreditation, but also fix a lot of the safety issues that are happening along that part right there. I wanted to also talk briefly just about some of the things I had brought up back in caucus. I did question or had reached out to the Chief of Police who was kind enough to respond back. He's actually away at a conference right now around just the money being transferred. And he had shared that the money being transferred that's listed right now is in regards to the response of the increase of the opioid epidemic. And so a lot of the overtime being responses to those who are overdosing. So I think that this really is, you know, a call out for the community services to, that coming together. And I think what we had talked about in the back there is looking at some of the CBD money and those programs that could also be working to address this. You know, as I'm sitting here and kind of digesting everything, my wheels are turning and it takes me a second to kind of put all my thoughts together around this, but I do think we need to come back and look at some of the programs and how some of the things that may not be getting funding are actually working to reduce the opioid use as preventative measures. And so with all of that kind of being said, I am going to look to sitting down with the Chief and Ms. Smith to kind of talk about just the process and what else we could be doing to address some of the crises that are happening in our community.
Thank you for the update. Councilmember Mo?
Thank you, Madam President. Not an official report, but I did want to make a couple announcements. As you know, I work for the Erie's Public Schools and this Friday is the last day before break, so just the drivers out there, just know that there'll be 12,000 more kids out there on the streets, especially if the weather's warm, so just encourage you to slow down and be careful out there. Also, on a personal note, every year I organize a free Easter basket event for kids. Been doing that about 12 years now through Odessa's place. That'll be March 30th at 11:00 a.m. If anybody wants to volunteer or donate a basket or just, you know, let people, families know who need baskets. Usually we pass out about anywhere between 400 and 500 baskets every year, so thanks to all the community members who donate, businesses who donated towards it. And that's March 30th at 11:00 a.m., 628 West 18th Street. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks. Yesterday was a planning commission meeting. I followed up with staff and members of that commission afterwards. They reviewed the historic plan that we'll be voting on next meeting and the zoning resolution that was put on a couple of months ago. I'm really looking forward to that, hopefully moving along. And there was some discussion about that after the meeting. I brought up a couple of weeks ago, Home Rule Charter, and that continues to, you know, the big thing for it is that if the city was to explore such a thing, it's important to get strong expertise. So I'm going to be reviewing a proposal from that, to bring in that expertise, to review our current charter and what the potential options are if we were to explore a more dynamic and responsive charter for our city. As far as a couple of community events, I think there was a couple of us that did Read Across America over at Grover Cleveland. I was doing the same time as the mayor, so we ended up walking out together, but my class really wanted him instead of me, so he came back to the class and then signed autographs, which then led to me signing autographs and his hand rings much more legible. He even gets that V middle initial in there. His looked much better than mine.
Better penmanship back in the day.
Yeah, well, penmanship, yeah. And then two other community events tomorrow is the comedy night for the Upper Room. I chaired the board for that, so that's a pretty exciting thing for that comedy night. And then, and then April 2nd, Lieutenant Lennox and myself will each be boxing Bizarro Brothers to raise money for addressing homelessness. If anyone's looking to go to that event, knock out homelessness, if you want to see me fight a former world champion, or if you just want to see me get punched by one, I think that's probably the better selling point. Those tickets are still available till the end of the week, but make sure you buy them under my name so that I get the points instead of Tom, so that I beat him in the challenge. That's it for my announcements.
I am attending for the first time ever. Put it in my budget, so I can't wait.
Wouldn't be the first of what council member suggested.
It has been one year, Mr. Campbell, since I fell on Payne Avenue on a sidewalk that had a lip and I broke my left hand and it still hurts today, but at least I have a hand and it still works. I actually reported a type of divot in a sidewalk as I was going to a State Street restaurant the other day and stepped into that. Thankfully, I didn't fall. I'm a sidewalk advocate. I hope we get some grants. I live on East 43rd Street and my street is not all the way paved as well. So sidewalks are needed, but they also need to be safe sidewalks. So as a walker, as a person who also helps the elderly and people, we need safe sidewalks for everyone. Thank you for speaking today. I attended the Sewer Authority meeting yesterday and there are upgrades needed. They have to comply with EPA. So the whole year this year, we're going to be seeing money going to them as they upgrade. It's an investment that we need to keep up with. I went to the Planning Commission meeting and was excited to see that Benjamin Wiley Charter School is interested in the purchase of all of the Holy Family areas for their use. So I actually walked through that neighborhood as well, so that will be a nice investment. And as our population declines in certain churches, the Catholic Church may in the future close that. They can't, they're not, he did mention that the bishop, they don't have, the church is still a church right now, but in the future, you never know what's going to happen in the future. So that particular Holy Family Church is not up for sale. But that is something to be aware of. That was talked about at today's presentation, the use of, you know, looking at the churches, looking at all kinds of buildings. I went to the blighted property review meeting and it was nice to see that one property got off of the blighted property list because it was more aesthetics than structure, so that was always a good thing to see. I attended the Visit Erie Breakfast and got to see firsthand with their report and John Oliver speaking. You know, years back, I would have never have considered Erie to be a tourist destination, you know, when I was in high school and that. But it is certainly has grown over the years and I promote it. My brother from Maryland is coming up to visit. He didn't even know about the eclipse being in Erie until I mentioned it to him today and so he's all excited about it. We're going to have public bathroom meetings. I talked with the administration with communications and they're going to put a little something on the website. If people are interested, truly 18 and older, attending these meetings, we're going to work through all of the issues that we have. We may not always meet here at City Hall. Everything will be announced publicly as to where we're going to be meeting here and there. But if you have a positive attitude and will work through all of the large concerns that are out there to continue to keep this momentum, please get interested just by dropping your name, your phone number, your email to the clerk's office. Is that all right? And I had talked, I had a meeting with Emily Fetcho this past Friday and, you know, we really have the compassion to move this forward as best as we can. So thank you for all who are interested. Tomorrow, there's a Water Authority meeting at 3:30. So, so far, Ed Kissel's like the only one I see at the Sewer and Water Authority meetings, but he has historical knowledge. And if you go to these meetings and, you know, 10, 15 years from now, you'll have historical knowledge. So that's how you invest in your community by attending public meetings. So thank you. St. Patrick's Day Parade was so awesome with such beautiful weather and here it is, the first day of spring and it's like winter, but that's Erie. So I saw where there's a 12th Street reimagined at 10:00 a.m. on March 27th at the Hagerty Center. That's also a public event, Mayor Joe? Thank you. But that's it. Thanks.
Alrighty, and I think Tyler had one more thing he wanted to comment before I gave my committee report.
Yes, thank you. Just real quickly, I don't even, I always forget to mention this. The nonprofit that I am honored to serve at Compton's Table, we have two programs that are going on right now. We have a True North program, which is an independent living program. It's an eight-week cohort, completely free for queer youth or queer young adults. And in this program, we teach everything from how to write a resume to how to find an apartment, how to apply for a job, how to find housing. And it's, again, it's open to anybody who wants to attend. You just sign up online. And then we're going to also have a name change clinic on April 13th. The amount of barriers that happen, not just that are cost prohibitive, just for individuals who are trans or gender nonconformant. just for individuals who are trans or gender nonconforming in order to apply for housing, apply for student loans, apply for, you know, a job when their presentation doesn't align with their legal name is astronomical, especially in the state of Pennsylvania since we do not have a nondiscrimination law. So we are offering a free clinic to help with the legal name change process. We'll walk you through, not just on how to get your name changed at the courthouse, but how to update your driver's license, your birth certificate. And we're able to do this because of Seth Trot and the Quinn Law Firm, so we're very grateful for them. But if anybody's interested in either one of those programs, you can go on to our website at comptons-table.org. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you Tyler. Can you please just sign for Lori? I think you're the missing signature. And for my committee report, I did attend the Grover Cleveland Read Across America on March 8th at 10:00 a.m. and I read to either third or fourth grade students, I'm not quite sure. I just know that their students were Ms. Barnes' class. So that was great, we took a picture and they all seemed really interested. I spoke at Perseus House today to a group of young girls to encourage them to finish school and to make plans for your life because, you know, a woman with a plan is a dangerous thing. And I feel like having a young person tell them that is impactful. I received a thank you letter from them all, so that was great. I attend the department head meetings every Tuesday morning to go over updates from each department, which is a nice thing to, you know, tune into because there's no surprises come Wednesday when I'm setting the agenda, which is nice. I met with Nathan Kobol from National Fuel. He's our liaison directly through National Fuel. And I did conversate with him about the coming increase that will be happening. From his explanation, it's a 40 cent increase based off of who's going to be distributing the fuel to us. It's like their charge, not necessarily National Fuel's charge. So that's going to be coming. I'm not quite sure if it's taking effect on the bills, but that is what our local liaison has mentioned to me. And then we had a Iftar dinner on March 17th with our Afghan community. It was very inspiring to be invited to break a fast and break bread with community members. I always enjoy being invited to dinner with community members because it really shows how inspiring different pockets of our community can be to all of the city residents. There was also a great turnout for our St. Patrick's Day Parade on Saturday and there was festivities all throughout the weekend. I'm currently wearing green as the last ditch effort to say goodbye to the green of St. Patrick's Day. And then we did have our study session yesterday, which highlighted the CDBG funds, the Home Investment Partnership Funds, and then the Emergency Solution Group Fund. So I was not surprised that there were quite a bit of people speaking on behalf of where community dollars will be going in the future. But hopefully, there's conversations that can be happened to see what can be done. And that is all I have to report. So I do not see our Ms. Teresa here, the controller, so we're going to move on to Ed. Alrighty, and the mayor's administration?
I just want to mention two things real quickly. One is, before the pandemic hit, I would go once a month down to the Class C 100 Studio, which is a mile or so below I-90. And I hadn't been there in a long time and they're starting to try to get me back in. So the thing that amazed me was how snowy it was once you got south of I-90. I mean, my car was sliding all over the place. I was a little concerned driving. I did go really slow, but I did make it down and back without any problems. But they interviewed, she interviewed Brenda Savelli, who runs that, interviewed me about two things. One is the 12th Street Reimagined Project, so I had a chance to talk about that. And that will be on the air, I think, at the end of this week. And then she asked, is there anything else? I said, can we talk about the eclipse on April 8th? And so we spent some time telling people about that and again, trying to encourage Erie residents to stay at their homes. Don't travel because it's going to be, the travel's going to be really difficult. I also wanted to mention just briefly that tomorrow evening, I'll be at the, a master ceremony is at the Corporate Comedy Club at Keller's Modern Magic and Comedy Club at 1402 State Street. And it's, the presentation starts at 7:00 and it'll be done by 10:00. I hope it's sooner than that because I might fall asleep there if I have to stay that long. But, so I just wanted to make sure you're all aware of that. Thanks very much, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mayor. Alrighty. Lori, this adjourns the meeting.
City Council adjourns at 8:09 p.m.